Good evening. This fifteenth meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being meeting virtual, please note that I will continue to recognize you by saying your name and that you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and then begin to speak. In lieu of the invocation this evening, I would ask that members to join me in a moment of silence and reflection before we begin tonight's meeting. Now we'll have the pledge of allegiance. For tonight's showcase, we're going to be joined by Ms. April Patterson, the Community Outreach Coordinator at Civic Works Energy Programs. Members in the packet of materials for tonight's meeting, you will find two helpful flyers detailing the home energy and job training Civic Works offers. Please feel free to share that information with your constituents. With that, Ms. Patterson, the floor is yours. Ms. Patterson, you are on mute. We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President Mosby. I do appreciate you. I am April Patterson, and again, I am the Community Outreach Coordinator at Civic Works, and I met President Mosby at a Wellness Day Fair at Herbert Street Park back in June. So I asked him if I could come and talk to the council about our programs. So thank you for giving me this opportunity. I promise I won't take up too much of your time. Just to give you a really quick overview, Civic Works has been around since nineteen ninety-three, and our overall mission is to provide skill development, education, and community service in order to help strengthen Baltimore. Our office is located at thirty-five zero one Brim's Lane in the Bella Edison Community. So I just want to give a shout out to Shannon Snead and say thank you for your continued support of our programs and our services at Civic Works, and you've been a great advocate for our organization. So thank you very much. Today, I'm going to talk to you about the two programs that are housed at thirty-five zero one Brim's Lane, which is our energy program and our Center for Sustainable Careers. Our energy program is three tiers. The first tier is Project Lightbulb, second tier is weatherization, and the third tier is solar panel installation. Our Project Lightbulb program is a program where we come to the home and install energy upgrade items in your home. So the families will get fourteen LED light bulbs, new showerheads, handheld showerheads in all the bathrooms, new faucet aerators for the bathroom and the kitchen. We will wrap your water heater pipes with insulation and will also give you power strip cords. So the main goal of that program is not only to help you save energy, but also to help you conserve water as well. The second tier of our energy programs is our weatherization program. And in our weatherization program, if that's something that you're interested in, what we would do is come to your home and give you an energy audit, which is basically just like a checkup for your house. And we will use some diagnostic equipment to see where you might have air leaks in your home and where you might need air sealing and insulation. We also do a wellness check to make sure there are not high levels of carbon monoxide, radon, mold, and things like that. So through our weatherization program, we want to make sure that you're able to live in a comfortable environment so that your house is warm in the winter, cool in the summer. We also want you to save money on your utility bills, and we also want you to live in an environment without having unhealthy pollutants come into your home as well. So these two programs are free for those folks that meet the income levels, the eligibility income levels, which is eighty-five percent of AMI. And just to give you an example, for a family of three, the family would have to make less than seventy-six thousand four hundred and four dollars in order to be eligible to get these services for free. So those are the first two tiers of our energy program. And the third tier is our solar panel installation program. So if someone is interested in solar panel installation, we will have a contractor come to your home and do a roof assessment and also work up a proposal for you for free. So the roof assessment will take a look at your roof and decide whether or not it would be good for solar panel installation. They'll look at shading, they'll look at obstructions, they'll look at the type of roof you have, they'll look at the direction that your roof faces, and they'll work up a customized proposal for you. And after they give you that proposal, you have about six weeks to decide whether or not you'd like to move forward. If you decide not to move forward, that's totally fine, doesn't cost you anything. If you decide you do want to move forward, then you would join our solar co-op and be able to take advantage of a group discount to get your solar panels installed. Solar panels, through our program, you can either finance them or you can buy them outright. The permitting process takes about six or seven weeks, and then the installation process takes about two or three days. So those are the three tiers of our energy program. And since we have started our energy program, we've been able to service more than five-hundred and fifty families with energy efficiency services or solar energy services. So we want to give a big shout out and appreciation to Alice Kennedy, Nicole Hart, Jim Hicks at the Baltimore DHCD for collaborating with us on our weatherization program as well as our energy education program and our home repairs program. So that's pretty much it in terms of our energy services. Now, the great thing about our energy program is that the folks who come out and do the weatherization on the homes as well as install the solar panels come through the Center for Sustainable Careers. So we're continuing to try to promote a community reinvestment model here in Baltimore. So there are three career tracks at our Center for Sustainable Careers, and that's weatherization, solar installation, and utility infrastructure. Our classroom component for those programs is approximately six weeks or so. The participants receive a weekly stipend during the classroom session, and then they participate in an on-the-job training component, which is about four to six weeks, and that's also paid. So they get an hourly wage when they participate in that part of the program as well. Since two thousand and three, there've been about eleven hundred to twelve hundred folks enrolled in the programs. Our placement rate is eighty-eight percent. The average wage right now for program graduates is seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents, and our one-year retention rate is over seventy-five percent. So we want to continue to provide not just jobs for folks in Baltimore City, but we want to provide sustainable careers. There are two expansion goals that we have going on in reference to our energy program and in reference to our job training program. We are trying to launch another industry track. We are doing a ten-week feasibility study for HVAC program. So hopefully, that will come to fruition soon. And then also in two thousand and twenty-one, Civic Works is working with Alice Kennedy and is poised to launch an innovative program called Baltimore Shines. And in partnership with the Baltimore City of Housing and Community Development, we are going to try to increase the accessibility of solar rooftop for folks and residents regardless of income and regardless of credit score here in Baltimore City. So hopefully, that will be able to launch that and have some success with that program as well. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to organizations and entities that have been able to collaborate with us over the years. I would be remiss if I didn't mention certain folks. So in terms of our energy program, we would definitely like to thank the Maryland Energy Administration, Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, Town Creek Foundation, Abel Foundation, and BGE. And in reference to our workforce development program, we definitely want to thank the Mayor's Office for Employment and Development, the Annie E. Casey Foundation, the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Foundation, as well as the Maryland Department of Labor and Licensing and Regulations. Also, just to mention, Civic Works is also a hub site, housing upgrades to benefit seniors. So we definitely want to thank Mayor Scott's Office for continuing to support hubs as well. So that is pretty much it in a nutshell, both of our programs. And so I'm here today to just kind of make a call to action for the council members in terms of helping me share information about our programs. If you all know of any community events going on where I can do some outreach and get folks enrolled in our programs, that would be great. If you all have good relationships with the community associations or neighborhood associations in your area, I would definitely like to connect with those folks in order to share information about what we're doing out in the community as well. Because some of the COVID restrictions are lifting, we're able to go back into the homes, but it's almost like we kind of have to reintroduce ourselves to the community because we've been gone for so long. So, you know, anything that you all can do to help us in that area, we would definitely greatly appreciate it. And that's pretty much all I had for this evening. I do appreciate your time and your attention, and I will put my contact information in the chat if anybody wants to reach out to me directly. You do have two marketing flyers in reference to our energy programs as well as our job training programs, so you can reach out to us at the phone numbers on those flyers as well. So.
Well, Ms. Patterson, we truly, truly thank you for all the hard work that you do in our community as it relates to educating folks, but also protecting them from an environmental perspective as well as saving them dollars. So your work is truly important to us, and we'd like to thank you for coming out today and sharing it with us.
Thank you. I appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
And I commit to sending out the information via all our social media pages in the office, and I'll encourage the other council members to do the same. So thank you so much, Ms. Patterson.
Thank you. You all have a wonderful evening and wishing you and your loved ones good health. Thank you so much.
You do the same. Now, Madam Clerk, we're going to have a roll call.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos. Mr. President, we have his form.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now proceed on to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal is, will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found beginning on page two of the agenda. We will now move to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, please read the first nomination.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero four three, Ray Kelly, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Seven.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now onto forty-four, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero forty-four, Trey Murphy, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Two.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now onto forty-five, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero forty-five, Ashaya Parker, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Nine.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now onto forty-six, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero forty-six, Lydia Walter Rodriguez, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Two.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Now onto forty-seven, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero forty-seven, Mark Washington, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Fourteen.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now onto forty-eight, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash zero zero forty-eight, Caitlin Young, Member, Local Control Advisory Board, District Three.
This nomination has also been assigned to Rules and the Oversight Committee. We will now move to bills being introduced for the first reading. Madam Clerk, please read the bills.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one hundred, City Property Grant of Easements for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the city council of Baltimore to grant two perpetual easements to the Maryland State Highway Administration for the maintenance of two stormwater drainage inlets along Delaney Valley Road through the property of Lock Raven Reservoir in Baltimore County, Maryland, as shown on plat sixty-one five three six, filed in the State Highway Administration State Roads Commission and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Now onto one oh one, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash one oh one, Corrective Bill Twenty-two One, General, for the purpose of correcting various errors and omissions in the city code, correcting, clarifying, and conforming certain inconsistencies, superfluous, vague, ungrammatical, misnumbered, and other unclear language, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, President Mosby, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Now onto one oh two, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one zero two, Building Permits Disposal Plan Requirement, the John F. Chalmers Senior Act, for the purpose of requiring certain holders of permits issued by the Department of Housing and Community Development to submit a disposal plan with the permit application, requiring permit holders to submit proof of disposal to the department within a certain period of time after the permit work has concluded, establishing a certain citation amount, and generally relating to requiring permit holders dispose of waste and refuse in a proper and legal manner. Sponsors are Councilmember Torrance, Cohen, Bullock, Porter, and Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'll yield the floor to the gentleman in the seventh district. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, colleagues. This evening, I'm introducing the following bill because there's an urgent need in our council districts. We're seeing a large number of renovation materials as well as construction materials being dumped in our communities. One of the things we currently do not have in our permanent process is a proof of disposal, but also requiring people to create a plan. What this has helped us to do is, one, create a system of cross-checks so that we can at least narrow down or identify potential persons who may be dumping in our communities, as well as provide opportunities for this information to be given to our waste stations where persons can turn over their actual permit numbers, and we'll be able to track that information, use data to be more informed about what we're seeing in our waste stations. And also, because of the fact that this bill and the work behind the scenes with it was done with John Chalmers, who recently retired from Baltimore City, we're also naming it in honor of him as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. At the moment, are there any questions, concerns, or additional co-sponsors? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Now onto one oh three, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one zero three, Suicide Prevention Coordinator Establishment, for the purpose of establishing the position of Suicide Prevention Coordinator within the Health Department and providing for the duties of the Suicide Prevention Coordinator. Sponsors are President Mosby, Councilmember McCray, Cohen, Bullock, Porter, and Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In late December of two thousand and twenty, a woman and her child were rescued out of the Baltimore Harbor by brave men and women of Baltimore Police Department to save them. The mother was attempting to drown not only herself, but also her six-year-old daughter. We know that during the peak of the pandemic, completed suicides in the state of Maryland, particularly as relates to African-American population in our state significantly increased. When you disaggregate the data, it's even more alarming associated with women in the state. What we wanted to do was put together a work group to try to identify any holes or gaps from a city perspective as well as from a state perspective, of subject matter experts, clinicians, mental health professionals, as well as policy leaders, to identify ways to do that. One of the first things that came out of that group is developing a Suicide Prevention Coordinator. This is best practice. This is nothing that's new. It will be new to the citizens of Baltimore. So with that, I appreciate all of the co-sponsors so far. Is there any questions, concerns regarding twenty-one dash zero one oh three? Councilmember Burnett.
I'd just like to be listed as a co-sponsor. And I was also, I raised my hand too late. I wanted to be listed on the last bill as well, but I can email on this one if it's too late for that.
Okay, so we'll just let the record reflect, and that one is listening, one oh two, twenty-one one oh two for Councilman Burnett, as well as twenty-one oh three, please add Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. And if you could, please, just for our records, email him. Any other additional questions or concerns?
Mr. President, same for me as well on this bill and the last bill, please.
The record could reflect Councilwoman Ramos's co-sponsorship as well.
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing no additional, this bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. I would like to also thank Chairwoman McCray for all of her hard work on the actual work group. They've been literally meeting consistently for several months to ensure that we put Baltimore citizens in the best vein associated with suicide prevention. Madam Clerk, on to twenty-one dash zero one oh four.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one oh four, Baltimore City Work Group on Women in Public Safety, for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Work Group on Women in Public Safety, providing for the composition and staffing of the work group, requiring the work group to study certain matters related to the recruitment, hiring, training, retention, mentorship, and promotions of women in Baltimore City Public Safety Agencies, requiring the work group to report its findings and recommendations to the mayor and the city council on or before a certain date, providing for a special effective date, providing for the termination of discordance, and generally relating to the advancement of women in public safety professions. Sponsors are Councilmember McCray, Bullock, Porter, and Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is a direct outcome of the hearing and testimony from adopted resolution investigating women in public safety and leveling the playing field. Despite any progress that has been made, there is still a large disparity gap of female representation within our public safety agencies. The investigative hearing from earlier this year proved the unequivocal need for a Baltimore City Work Group to be instituted in order to critically investigate the current practices, statistics surrounding the recruitment, retention, and promotion of experienced women, and historical trends. This initiative will allow us to develop a comprehensive strategy to increase and retain female representation in our public safety agencies. I thank my colleagues for your continued support, and thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairwoman McCray, and your leadership on this issue. Any additional questions or concerns or co-sponsors?
I'm going to be a co-sponsor, Mr. President. It's Councilman.
We've got Chairman Stokes, we have Councilwoman Ramos, we have Councilman Burnett, and we have Councilman Torrance. Any additional co-sponsors?
It's Cohen.
We also have Councilman Cohen, as well as Chairman Conway. Hearing and seeing no additional comments or concerns, this bill will be assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, on to one oh five.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one oh five, RPP, Area Twenty-Six, Campbell Lane Revisions, for the purpose of altering the applicable block faces included in residential parking plan, Area Twenty-Six, Campbell Lane, and altering the hours of applicable parking restrictions to be consistent with a prior Parking Authority of Baltimore City administrative order. Sponsor is Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. If you could, please, read in to the records, one oh six.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one zero six, Study and Report Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department, for the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating the policies, practices, and internal control systems of the department and evaluating the potential establishment of an office dedicated to compliance and investigations within the fire department and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Bullock, and Porter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I yield the floor to the gentleman in the eighth district.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. And if you'd like, Mr. President, I can just talk about this one and the next one because they're very similar.
Yes, sir.
I'm here tonight. So this is a study and report bill, or both are study and report bills that are a continuation of the investigation we've been doing in the Public Safety Committee to look into the hiring, promotional accountability practices within the Baltimore City Fire Department, how people are disciplined, the use of the Office of Equity in their decision-making processes, as well as the calls for additional oversight. And so, again, more of an information gathering effort in a continuation of the work that we've been doing in this body. So thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman. That bill has been, are there any additional co-sponsors? Right now, we're just going to focus on one oh six because we have to read in one oh seven. I see the hand of Councilman Torrance. I believe that's it. So this bill will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you can read in one oh seven.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one oh seven, Study and Report Operations of the Baltimore City Fire Department, for the purpose of requiring that Baltimore City Fire Department, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating departmental operations, fire suppression, and emergency medical services staffing, community risk reduction programs, and performance management programs, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Bullock, and Porter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional co-sponsors for this bill? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been, I'm sorry, Councilmember Torrance would like to be added for the record. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Please move on to twenty-one dash one oh eight, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one zero eight, City Property renaming James Mosher Elementary School to Billie Holiday Elementary School, for the purpose of changing the name of James Mosher Elementary School located at twenty-four hundred Mosher Street to Billie Holiday Elementary School. Sponsors are Councilmember Bullock and Porter.
Got it. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to twenty-one dash one oh nine, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one oh nine, City Property renaming Calverton Elementary Middle School to Katherine Johnson Global Academy, for the purpose of changing the name of Calverton Elementary Middle School located at two oh one North Bend Road to Katherine Johnson Global Academy. Sponsors are Councilmembers Bullock and Porter.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Now on to twenty-one dash one ten. I'm sorry, I think the sponsor of both bills would like to speak. Sorry about that, Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
That's all Dorsey, Councilman Bullock. Thank you. I know, we look so much alike. But again, thank you so much for the opportunity. Just really want to note, these inspirational black women at these schools are going to be named after. In the case of James Mosher, now you have a twenty-first century school that's a new renovation. Again, this is a community collaborative process where you have students' voices being heard, also members of the community, and I think it's a really great investment in our young people. So again, Billie Holiday, as we know, has been a great icon nationwide, but also a special place in Baltimore's heart in terms of art and culture and making political statements. So I think it's really apt for the school to be named after Billie Holiday. And then also want to make a note about Calverton now being named for Katherine Johnson, the Katherine Johnson Global Academy. Do want to note that the address should read eleven hundred Whitmore, so we'll work with legislative reference to make sure that is reflected properly. But again, you have someone who is a mathematician who helped to do the calculations for NASA's space shuttle missions, and so, you know, Katherine Johnson is an icon as it relates to math, science, technology, engineering. And so, again, this is a great opportunity, example for our young women, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that she's also, Katherine Johnson was a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, as is our illustrious colleague, Alicia Porter, and we do know the AKH just had their boule, their sixty-ninth boule last week, so definitely want to recognize this leadership in our community and making sure that we make the connection to our young people here in the city. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak a few words on these powerful renaming.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullock. I would also like to add that Madam Clerk is also a member of that illustrious sorority as well, and I know she's just as proud and happy as well. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Now on to twenty-one dash one ten, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one ten, City Property renaming Mullen Park to Tupac Amaru Shakur Park, for the purpose of changing the name of Mullen Park located at four thousand Old York Road, Baltimore, Maryland, twenty-one twenty-one eight to Tupac Amaru Shakur Park. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway and Bullock.
At this point, I would like to recognize- At this point, I would like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was brought forward or recommended at the request of the Tupac Amaru Shakur Foundation in remembrance of, of course, Tupac Shakur and the 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 impact that he made on 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 the world, really. This year Tupac would have been fifty years old. And as I'm sure everyone on this call knows, and many others know, Tupac lived in Baltimore for some time in the Pennsylie community in my district. This park, Mullen Park, was a park that he frequented all the time. He actually lived in one of the row homes right next to the park and would run out his back door right into the park. So really excited to have the opportunity to remember Tupac and the legacy that he left and and what Baltimore meant to him. And I hope that we can continue to give back to the Pennsylie community and help some of the young people in that in that area continue to thrive. With that, thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Conway. What's your favorite Tupac song?
That's not fair. There's so many.
All right. It's so many. It's so many. All right. I'll save it for you. All right. So many. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, now on to twenty-one dash one eleven.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one eleven, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R seven zoning district variance, twenty-three twelve Utah Place. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district on the property known as twenty-three twelve Utah Place Block thirty-four twenty-four Lot twenty-seven, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat and granting a variance from certain bulk regulations for the lot area size. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
Sorry, I was on mute. That bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Now, Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to twenty-one dash one twelve.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one twelve, Charter Amendment, Supplementary Criminal Apprehension and Conviction Fund. For the purpose of establishing a continuing, non-lapsing supplementary criminal apprehension and conviction fund to be used exclusively to supplement rewards offered to the public for information leading to the apprehension, arrest, and conviction of criminal suspects, providing for certain modes of appropriation to this fund, authorizing the mayor and city council by ordinance to provide for the oversight, governance, and administration of this fund, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors are Councilmember Schleifer and Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this fund would be created on the city charter if it were to pass, and that would be similar to many other funds that we have on the city charter. Most recently, we did one for publicly financed campaigns. And so it'd be set up similar to that. If it were to pass, it would then go to the voters to make the final decision at the next election on whether or not they should move forward. The reason for this fund is right now the clearance rate is under fifty percent, which means that you have about a over fifty percent chance of getting away with murder in Baltimore City. It is devastating to the communities, the families, and the victims that are facing this trauma every day without getting any closure. We see a lot of different high-profile cases where there's rewards offered. Usually within a week after a murder takes place, you'll see a reward flyer go up. The general reward that's offered is two to four thousand dollars. And in certain high-profile cases, whether it be a business owner, or whether it be, you know, depending on the neighborhood, you'll see rewards skyrocket in the tens, and sometimes even surpassing a hundred thousand dollars. And that is a major equity issue, and we need to address that by creating a fund and allowing citywide that all murders are treated that same way and have the rewards set up that people can anonymously provide the information that they know and receive an award for for doing so. And so I look forward to having a discussion in committee on this on this charter amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, are there any additional co-sponsors or questions or concerns for the chair? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the deputy council member of the Ninth District. He made his presence known, but I think he's off the camera now. Think he had a pretty big week in track two weeks ago. Is that right? We all saw that. We're proud of the Yen Bullock. We can now move on to resolutions being introduced for the first reading. Clerk, please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five one R, Intent to Renamed North Central Park at Perkins Somerset Old Town to Nathaniel McFadden Learn and Play Park. For the purpose of declaring the city council's intent to rename North Central Park, which is a part of the PSO Transformation Plan, to the Nathaniel McFadden Learn and Play Park when the Housing Authority of Baltimore City conveys title to five hundred North Central Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, twenty-one two oh two to the mayor and city council of Baltimore. Sponsor is Councilmember Stokes.
Chairman Stokes, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is to rename North Central Park at Perkins Somerset Old Town to Nathaniel McFadden Learn and Play Park. Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objections to suspend the rules, hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. Mr. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
President, I move that the resolution be adopted.
Clerk, we'll call the vote.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
Councilmember McCray.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilmember Conway.
Aye.
Chris Schleifer.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Councilmember Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock.
Aye.
Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Costello.
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover. And Councilmember Ramos.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. On to twenty-one dash fifty-two R.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five two R, Informational Hearing, Baltimore City Employees Safe Transition to Work After COVID-nineteen. For the purpose of inviting the Baltimore City Administrator, the Director of the Department of Human Resources, the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the Director of the Department of General Services, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management, and the Baltimore City Safeties Czar to appear before the city council to discuss the plans and strategies that are being developed to transition Baltimore City employees back to safe physical work environments. Sponsor is Councilmember McCray.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Councilmember McCray, I'm sorry, Chairman, Chairwoman McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of twenty-one dash fifty-two R?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would. The health and safety of our city employees are a paramount concern in regards to a safe transition back to an in-person working environment. We all recognize that our employees work within different settings and spaces, excuse me, and spaces, which call for very specific safety measures and precautions. I want to ensure that our agencies are being proactive and thoughtful now and that there is a comprehensive plan before all employees return back to the physical workplace environment. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Chair Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I just want to be a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Are there any additional co-sponsors for twenty-one dash five two R? I see Councilman Torrance. I see Councilwoman Ramos. I see Councilman Burnett. I see Councilman Glover. Are there any additional ones? I see Councilman Cohen, as well as Deputy Councilman, the youngest member of this body, Cohen. I also see Vice President Middleton. Any additional? Hearing and seeing none. Again, this resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology. Next, we can go on to the Consent Calendar. You can find the Consent Calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the Consent Calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to Bills on second reader. At this point, I would like to call on Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
It's been moved. Has it been a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. I think we did not have to do that. At this point, if are there any objections to going to short titles? Hearing and seeing none, I will be in short titles for remainder. Madam Clerk, if you go to Council Bill twenty-one dash five one.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero five one, Rezoning, Forty-nine hundred Boston Street.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Vice President of the Council, Vice President Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And by the way, I have some Tupac favorites. I'm sure everyone, I'm sure everyone knows Dear Mama.
Uh-oh.
And Changes. There's another one, Hold Your Head Up.
Uh-oh, look at that.
My son just happened to have been, he's a Tupac fan.
I thought I thought you were going to say Hit Em Up, Madam. It's not saying, not on this, not on this chat. Come on. The floor is yours.
So you see, young people, I'm hip to all that stuff. Okay. Um.
You got so, you got so excited and caught up in Tupac, you forgot where we are on the agenda. You want to start freestyling.
All right. So we're at Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero five one, and that was forty-nine Boston, forty-nine hundred Boston Street. So the committee heard this bill on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. There were findings of the facts, which are on Councilmember's electronic folders. I move the finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the finding of the facts, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are adopted. Vice President Middleton, the floor is yours.
I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilmember, Council Chairman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for third reader. Now on to Council Bill twenty-one dash fifty-two.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero five two, Zoning, Block six four five eight, Lot zero zero four, and Block PSC zero, Lot zero eighty-five.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee also heard this bill on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. I move the finding of facts.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving and adopting the finding of the facts, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of the facts are now adopted. Back to you, Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, on to twenty-one dash fifty-eight.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero seven eight, Required Real Estate Disclosures, Formerly Vacant Structures.
I yield the floor to Madam Vice President.
The committee heard this bill on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. There are amendments for this bill. The committee approved technical amendments for the bill and also added language for the creation of a disclosure form, as well as a spec, as well as specified that the requirements of the bill are not retroactive. I move the amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving and of adopting the committee, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are now adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved as amended, as amended, and will be printed for third reader. Now on to Council Bill twenty-one dash eighty-five, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero eight five, Baltimore City Fire Code Telephone Access to Nine One One Emergency System.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
The committee heard this bill on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. This bill will enhance access to Baltimore's emergency system. It will make it possible for any person dialing from a multi-line telephone to be able to reach nine one one by just dialing nine one one. A person will no longer have to dial a one, or a nine, or any other number before dialing nine one one. I move the bill was favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved and will be printed for third reader. Now on to twenty-one dash thirty-six R.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero three six R, Informational Hearing, Avoiding an Eviction Crisis.
I yield the floor to you, Madam Vice President.
The committee heard this bill on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Representatives from city agencies and organizations shared valuable information about how the city is handling the national eviction crisis. Agencies in Baltimore have put forth people-focused strategies and aimed at remediating the impact many will face when eviction moratoriums are lifted. Resources shared at the information informational hearing are being made available to help. If anyone missed the hearing, a recording can be accessed at Baltimore's Citizen Hub on Charm TV twenty-five. The committee approved an amendment. I move the amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the council resolution favorable as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the resolution as amended, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Not all at once. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is now adopted. Now on to Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-seven R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero three seven R, Informational Hearing, Studying Options to Rid Baltimore City of Vacant Properties.
Madam Vice President, I yield the floor to you.
The committee also heard this bill on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. I move the council resolution is favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Now we're going to move into Education, Workforce, and Youth. Madam Clerk, please read in twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero three nine, Local Hiring Employment Plan.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing in two work sessions on this bill. The two sets of amendments were on the Councilperson's desk. The first set consists of five amendments, and were adopted by the committee. I move these amendments favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
The bill has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Next to the floor amendment, this amendment corrects the purpose clause to reflect amendments we just voted on. I move amendment favorable.
So this is considered a technical amendment by Department of Legislative Reference. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting the technical amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is adopted. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I move the floor amendment favorable.
Is it a, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the bill as amended, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, uh, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved as amended and will be printed for third reading. Now on to Public Safety and Government, uh, Operations. Council Bill twenty-one dash eighty-six, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero eight-six, Minority and Women's Business Program Inter-, Interim Extension.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this bill came out of committee on June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it was sponsored by the Council President on behalf of the administration, and the committee approved this bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved as amended. Look, look. Did you just move amendments, right?
Nope.
Just. That was the.
Are any amendments, um, on this bill, Chairman? Are we good?
No, there are no amendments.
Okay, cool. Alright, the ayes have it, this bill is approved. Um. Now, were you going to, um, invoke twelve dash one on this, or we're gonna wait till next, uh, meeting, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I don't have in the script to do twelve dash one. We can't do it.
We'll just wait. I don't think there is, um, there's no reason. I think we were just doing it, uh, just so, so we're, we're good. That's on me, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, moving on, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, just for the record, uh, twenty-one dash eighty-six, Minority Women's Business Program Interim Extension, uh, has been, uh, approved on second reader and will move on to third reader for printing. Uh, bills on third reading right now, we turn now to bills on third reading for final passage that require invocation of City Council Rule twelve dash one. Nope. We decided that we were not going to, oh no, we're gonna do that for the, um, uh, we have some, um, rezoning bills.
We're on.
No, we're good. No, no, we're good, cuz, cuz we didn't do the twenty-one dash fifty-three. Uh, so we're just gonna go straight into third reader. We don't have to invoke twelve dash one. Uh, on, on two bills on a third reader for final passage.
President, didn't we just skip one? We skipped a bill.
We skipped, uh, seventeen R.
Uh-oh. We got seventeen R, really? One second, folks. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could read in, uh, City Council Resolution twenty-one dash one-seven R.
City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero one-seven R, Investigative Hearing Arson and Fire Fatality Awareness, Reinstituting the Baltimore City Joint Agency Arson Task Force.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this bill came out of committee on July seventh, twenty-twenty-one. It was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett, and the committee approved the bill as favorable. So I move the bill as favorable.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Now we're gonna move on to third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could start reading the bills on third reader.
Twenty-one dash zero zero five-three, rezoning four-two-zero-seven through four-two-zero-nine Menlo Drive. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash fifty-seven, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero five-seven, repeal Reisterstown Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash sixty-six, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero six-six, Retirement Systems, Profin Investment and Divestment, also fuel companies. President Mosby, Councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved. Now on to the last and final bill on third reader, twenty-one dash seventy-five, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero seven-five, Studying Report, Sewerage Backup Expedited Reimbursement and Direct Assistance Program. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see the hand of Chairman, uh, Conway. The floor is yours, Chairman.
Mr. President, I, I, I apologize. I hadn't gotten to that part of the agenda. Yes, we did intend to move it, um, uh, Bill, uh, oh eight-six. Uh, we can, if you'd like, or we can hold off. I have no problem.
Yeah, Chairman Conway, I think we just hold off. We'll just do it next week.
Okay.
No, thank you for pointing that out, but we're good. Um, so now we're gonna move into committee announcements. Uh, Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with any, uh, committee announcements you would like to present today. Uh, first up, Economic Community Development.
Yes, Mr. President, I have, uh, three hearing announcements, and all three are scheduled on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So the first one is at two P M. Uh, September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Bill number twenty dash zero zero five-four, rezoning six oh five South Caton Avenue. Sponsor, uh, Councilwoman Porter. Uh, the second bill is also scheduled on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one at two oh five P M. That's Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero five-six, the Urban Renewal, uh, Canton Industrial Area Amendment, uh, sponsor Councilman Cohen. And the third bill on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one at two ten P M is Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero seven-six, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district, variance ten forty-nine, Brantley Avenue, and that's, um, the sponsor of that bill is Councilwoman Bullock. And just, and just a reminder, um, we're, you know, in September, we approach uh, Jewish holidays, and a lot of them are held on Tuesdays. So I just wanted to put that information out there as we continue to plan for, um, hearings.
Thank you for your, thank you for your guidance and leadership, Madam Vice President. Uh, now we're gonna move on to Education Workforce and Youth. Uh, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education Workforce, Workforce and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, beginning at ten A M for Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero forty-seven R, upkeep and maintenance of vacant lots and public green space at the request of Councilmember, Councilmember Burnett. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, we're going to Health, Environment, and Technology. Uh, Madam Chairwoman, McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objections, Rules ten-two and ten-three will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr.
They're suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, August the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at ten A M on Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five-two R, informational hearing, Baltimore City Employees Safe Transition to Work After COVID-nineteen. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will also hold a hearing on Wednesday, August the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one at ten zero one A M on Resolution twenty-one dash zero 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 five R, Department of General Services Update on Sanitizing City-Owned Buildings. Both of these hearings, both of those hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. And, Mr. President, I do move to suspend ten-three to announce an additional hearing.
Without any objection, ten-three is now suspended. Madam Chair, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one at ten A M on Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero three, Suicide Prevention Coordinator Establishment. The hearing will be conducted virtually through WebEx. And, Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule ten-three to announce a final hearing.
Without any objection, ten-three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Madam, uh, Chairwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one at ten zero one A M on Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero four, Baltimore City Work Group on Women in Public Safety. This hearing will also be conducted virtually through WebEx. And thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairwoman. Uh, next up, we're gonna go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Uh, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
I thank you, Mr. President. Uh, and if everybody can bear with me, we got a lot of announcements tonight. On July twenty-ninth, uh, the Rules and Oversight Committee will hear eleven nominations, uh, to the Retirement and Aging Commission. Uh, the first one is E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-two at two P M, uh, Jim Campbell. The second one is E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-three at two oh one P M, Barbara Hornman. Next, we have E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-four at two oh two P M, Thomas Kudjo. Next, we have E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-five at two oh three P M, Monte Ephraim. Next up is E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-six at two oh four P M, Susan Francis. Uh, next up, E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-seven at two oh five P M, uh, Daniel Hale. Next up, twenty-one, E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-eight at two oh six P M, Elizabeth Frances Johnson. Next up, E A twenty-one dash zero zero three-nine at two oh seven P M, uh, Sonia Merchant Jones. Next, E A twenty-one dash zero zero four oh at two oh eight P M, uh, Reverend Brian Edward Murray. Next, E A twenty-one dash zero zero four one at two oh nine P M, Jenny Pinadeus Hayes. Next is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four two at two ten P M, Sarah Sanston. And that concludes the Retirement and Aging Commission. Uh, then at two fifteen, uh, same day on the twenty-ninth, we will hold a work session, a work and voting session on, uh, City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero nine-six. And at two thirty, uh, P M, we will hear six nominations for the Local Control Advisory Board. Uh, first one at, uh, two thirty, uh, is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-three, Ray Kelly. Next is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-four at two thirty-one, and that's Trey Murphy. Next is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-five at two thirty-two, and that is Ayesha Parker. Next is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-six at two thirty-three, and that is Lydia, uh, Wither Rodriguez. Next up is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-seven at two thirty-four, and that is Mark Washington. And, uh, last one is E A twenty-one dash zero zero four-eight at two thirty-five, and that's Kalen Young. Uh, finally, last announcement we have is on August twelfth, at five P M, the committee will hold a continuation hearing on Legislative Oversight twenty-one dash zero 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 four, uh, concerning, uh, vaccine distribution. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you for running us through that, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, last but certainly not least, we're going to Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July twentieth, at ten A M. This will be a virtual hearing on City Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero two-four R, informational hearing, Baltimore City Tax Sale at the request of Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. Uh, we now will move on to regular announcements. Members, please, we'd be recognized if you, I'm sorry, who's that?
Mr. President.
Chairman, uh, Chairman Conway?
Oh, you skipped me. Uh, for Public Safety.
I skipped you, Public Safety?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm so sorry. We're gonna go back to, so, uh, Public Safety, uh, please, uh, let us know if you have any committee announcements.
Sure, we, we got a handful. Um, so the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be, will be meeting, uh, to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero zero four-zero R, informational hearing, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, on Wednesday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, at three forty-five P M, virtually. Um, the committee will hear L O twenty-one dash zero zero one one-two, Baltimore City Fire Department E M T firefighter, uh, pre-impor-, pre-employment screening and hiring process on Wednesday, August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one at four thirty P M, virtually. Um, both of those bills were, uh, sponsored by myself, uh, Councilmember Conway. Uh, and the next bill will be L O twenty-one dash zero zero one-three, investigative hearing on the mismanagement of police, um, Baltimore Police overtime at five P M, virtually. And that is also sponsored by myself. Uh, and that's all we have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. Sorry for skipping over you. I think, Madam Vice President, you had your hand raised as well?
Yes, just one correction. Uh, look, I was so into Tupac. The first, um, announcement that I made for, I had said Bill number twenty dash zero zero five-four, and thanks to my, the wonderful staff of Council Services, uh, caught that, and it's Bill twenty-one dash zero zero five-four will be heard on September fourteenth at two P M. And it's the, it's the rezoning of six oh five South Caton Avenue. So again, it's twenty-one dash zero zero five-four, not twenty.
So Council Services, thank you for all the hard work that you do to keep us straight. And Madam Vice President, thank you for correcting the record. Before we, uh, conclude, want to make sure, uh, for the record, twenty-one dash zero zero seven-five, Studying Report, Sewerage Backup Expedited Reimbursement and Direct Assistance Program was formally approved. We want to just make sure that the record, uh, on third read, we want to make sure the record accurately, accurately reflects that. Uh, that ends the business, uh, at the desk. Um, we now gonna move on to regular announcements. Uh, any members with any regular announcements? Com-, uh, Chairman Costello, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to ask for a moment of silence. Um, Council Vice President Middleton, I apologize. I just emailed you the names, uh, so that you have them. Uh, the first is for James Earl Reed, uh, a renowned national sculptor. Um, he was responsible for, um, the sculpture on the fourteen-hundred block of Pennsylvania Avenue, uh, which I know, Mr. President, you're intimately familiar with, the Billie Holiday statue. Um, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's one of the best monuments that we have in Baltimore City. I just want to ask for a moment of silence for him. Also want to request a moment of silence, uh, for State Senator, uh, Julian Jack Lapitas, uh, a Bolton Hill resident, um, longtime member of, of Maryland State Senate. Um, just a wonderful, wonderful human being. Uh, one of the most intelligent folks that I've ever had the opportunity to get to know. Uh, integrity beyond reproach. Um, oftentimes referred to as the conscience of the, uh, Maryland State Senate. Uh, so want to ask for a moment of silence, uh, for him and to keep his loving wife Linda and their family, friends, and neighbors in Bolton Hill in your prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. Are there any additional announcements? I see the hand, uh, uh, yes, uh, I see the hand. Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I just wanted to report out to you all, as well as the public, on our meeting with the Postal Service last week. We had the Director of the Regional Postmaster General. We also had the Baltimore City Postmaster General and various other senior staff. I want to thank Senator Van Hollen's office for helping to put this together. It was, we had about eighty-five, almost ninety people there, and everyone who ended up staying was able to speak. Many constituents talked about the same problems that you all have seen in your districts of delayed mail, medications going missing, paychecks missing, bills being mailed late and then being laid back so that they had a late fee, and really matters of life or death in a lot of cases. And it was shocking to me, actually, that there were some of the constituent pieces that are issues that people brought up, the postmasters, and did not know of, particularly the not having stamps at our local post offices, and also that they had said they would be back to today and on-time delivery by the end of the month, yet there's still a lot of mail missing. Many people had talked about informed delivery, saying that there would be something coming in, but it never came. They have cleared out all of the warehouses and all of the stations, as well as Central Post Office, and there doesn't seem to be any mail left, but there's still mail missing. So they did commit to try to find some of that missing mail. So I'm hopeful that our meeting helped to bring some more knowledge to them about what the issues are, and hopefully we will continue to see improvement, considering that the Inspector General of the U S Post Office had said that Baltimore City was at the very bottom of the list in terms of on-time delivery the first quarter of the year. So we do expect to have better results, and we will hold them to that. And I want to thank my colleagues and all the constituents who showed up for that meeting and continue to work with everyone on this particular, very important issue in our, in our community. So thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to report out.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Madam Vice President, if you could also add Mammy McDaniel's to a moment of silence. She was one of a handful of students to help desegregate Southern High School here in the city of Baltimore, seventeen days after the U S Supreme Court ruled on the Brown versus Board of Education, which is also intricately connected to the city of Baltimore through Thurgood Marshall. So if you could, please remember Mammy McDaniel's. Are there any additional announcements?
Yes.
Of course.
I'd like to also add, her name is Shirley Shepherd, and she is the sister of Alice Triplin, and a lot of people know her by Vaughn. She's a doctor of cosmetology that had hair salons, basically all on Charles Street, different parts of Baltimore. Her and her sister worked together. They, her sister passed away last week from a long battle of cancer, and her name is Shirley Shepherd.
And I see the hand of Councilman Dorsey.
And one other, one other quick announcement that's, I guess, not related to a moment of silence, but I just want to shout out that we had a successful national meeting with the National Association of Counties last week. We, they decided to hold in-person and virtual meeting, and I attended the virtual four-day meeting, which was held in National Harbor. It, that harbor basically has been closed the whole time of COVID, and the National Association of Counties, which is in D C, and they usually, you know, every year having different sites around the country. And Prince George's County hosted that meeting, the entire council. And really good meeting was, of course, the Vice President Harris was there and had a chance to meet her. Also, the gentleman, Mr. Benjamin Crump, that handled the case, the George Floyd case, was also present. Just so people know, the National Association of Counties is basically representing commissioners and council members and aldermen around the country. So once a year, they meet and share best practices and ideas. And it was about two thousand people that attended this meeting, and just lots of workshops. It was an election cycle for second vice president. I carried the eleven votes for Baltimore City, and Prince George's County also carried their votes, as well as Charles County. So we gave our votes to the winner, which is Mr. Larry Young, I mean, not Larry Young, Larry Johnson, a long-serving council member from DeKalb County in Georgia. He tried to run last year and stuck with it and won this go-round. Very active African-American gentleman that really put his heart and soul and definitely deserves this year as, as the president. And the next go, the next year, an African-American woman will move up to that seat, and there hasn't been an African-American woman representing that organization since the early seventies. So changes are taking place as well within that organization. Again, the National Association of Counties help us on the federal level, and of course, the Maryland Association of Counties help us on the state level. And I know that there are members of this council that are starting to get more interested in the Maryland Association of Counties, and that's how you begin to start and become a part. And one day, I'm hoping to see the entire council be a part of this, of both of these very powerful prestigious organizations. And that's all I'll say for now about, about those organizations. So I will add a plug that the Maryland Association of Counties have decided to also have an in-person conference, which we know is usually held in Ocean City, and looking forward to those that have, that are preparing to also attend that. As you know, I was past, they call me the past COVID president. So I was, of course, I was, we were not able to enjoy that as Baltimore City representatives because, you know, we were shut down. But I hope that you all attend. And just to add that we are, we are, because of Baltimore really not experiencing that recognition that we deserve, we are trying to get a retreat sometime in November to be held in Baltimore City. So they, we're kind of switching the little things a little bit just to give us some just due. So I'll keep you all posted, Mr. President, as well as the mayor's office, when that is confirmed and when that takes place. And I hope that all of you participate because it will be a positive shine on the, on the great things that we continue to do in our city.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And we heard your charge loud and clear, to be participating in Mako as well as Deco. So thank you for your leadership and guidance there. Did I see the hand of someone else? Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a shout out and condolences relatedly to my high school friend, Darrin Polk, and to his family, the family of the late music producer Jimmy Jones, who, from Baltimore here, of Watch Out for the Big Girl fame, who died earlier this year. The family's going to be doing a ceremonial street naming coming up. And so I just wanted, he, he reached out to me about it earlier. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the family. It's been a little while since the passing, but, but still, the big girl definitely deserves some recognition there. Uber famous Baltimore club jam. So thanks, Mr. President.
No, thank you for uplifting that, Councilman Dorsey. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
I just, I just wanted to note that that big girl's often my daughter, one of her favorite songs of all time. So I just want to definitely co-sign to that one.
Matt Stegman in our office just said him too. He said, me too. That's his go-to song. So I'm, before we close out and go into you, Madam Vice Chair, to close us out, I would like to thank each and every one of you council members, as well as the staff from D L R, as well as Legislative Services, and the Council President's staff. I think that we've been at this for about eight months. I think some real substantive legislation has come before us. I think we've had some debate, some discourse, but I think we're really moving in the right direction as it relates to professionalizing the council in a way that really needed, you know, we're not going to be able to eradicate some of the systemic issues right away, but it's all about momentum and progression and chipping it away incrementally. And I think that that's what we've been able to do, and that's what we'll continue to do. So again, I would like to thank each and every one of you, as well as your staff, for all the hard work that we've been pouring into this for the past eight months. Councilman Dorsey, I see your hand raised again.
I'm so sorry, Mr. President. You just made me think that there's one thing left worth mentioning if it hasn't been mentioned already. This is Tony DeFranco's last week with D L R.
Yeah.
He has been just so incredible in drafting bills over the last few years. It's a, it's a come-up for the AG's office where he's going to be heading for his new job to work with them. Just, Tony's going to be sorely missed. I can't speak highly enough of the experience that I've had working with him. Baltimore City is just really fortunate to have him as a citizen of it. So thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for uplifting that. Yes, Tony has been an amazing steward, a public servant. I'm pretty sure all of you have had a lot of interactions with him, ensuring that we stay right and stay corrected. So Tony, you will be sorely missed, but what we've lost, the state has gained. With that, are there any additional questions, concerns, or announcements? Hearing none. Madam Vice Chair, the floor is yours. I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty one, at five P M, virtually. And may we have a moment of silence for Reverend Dr. Peggy Wall, Mammy McDaniel's, James Earl Reed, Senator Julian Jack Lepitas, Shirley Shepherd, and also the families of the now one hundred and eighty-seven homicides, one thousand one hundred and three deaths for COVID since the start of the pandemic, and of course, the victims of our continued opioid epidemic.
Thank you all. This concludes the business at the desk for this fifteenth meeting on the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.